Just so we can see beyond a year or two, it should be helpful. So, thank you.
And just from a communication, somebody says, I don't think we should call this a balanced budget since it's really not. I think we should say it's an anticipated deficit to provide profit actually, because that's the truth. And it would confuse people to look at a negative bottom line and hear that that's our definition of balance. I'm just saying.
That's a good point.
Good point for messaging standpoint right there. Go over well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Mr. Door. It's the Resolution Authorizing Preparation, Placement for Inspection, and Publication of the FY 2020 Senator's Budget. So, we're asking that the Committee of the Hall recommend that we approve the Resolution Authorizing Preparation, Placement for Inspection, and the Publication of the Fiscal 2020 Budget at the Special Board meeting that follows this meeting. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Six and Board Policy for沫nentia.
Thank you.
And the next item is the, oh, we're finished with finance. Now, we move to policies for first read. In the board memo, it indicates the changes made to these policies as recommended by press. Each administrator responsible has gone through them at this point in time. Are there any questions tied to the policies for first read?
I have a couple. Not big. Oh, I know, but I have a couple. So, one is, and I think we have a policy on this, but I just have to ask. So, if any of us as a board member receives an email on a board subject from someone, are we supposed to make sure you get that so that you could transmit that to everybody else?
Right. You send it to Gil and I and C.C. Dr. Moore.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I knew that procedure because we got a thing on that.
Do we have a board policy committee?
Yes. It's actually myself, Roxanna, and Ms. Bybee is the person we usually go through as a team, the policies before we bring them forward.
I didn't see that in our listing committee or whatever, so I was just asking the question since it's referenced in the policy. And the one specific policy thing I had, I think, well, I think there's just a typo at five dash one eighty in the end of the first pair, the one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph. There's a continuation line, if the examination is job-related and consistent with business necessity, which is printed twice.
All right. Five colon one, any temporary illness?
Yeah. See that? If the examination is job-related and consistent with business necessity, period, and then a carry-forward new paragraph, that exact same phrase. I think that's just the typo. I think that that should just come out.
Oh.
And in five dash two nine zero, I think we have some, I think it doesn't read clearly or consistently as redrafted, and I think it's missing some numerics. So, the non-affiliated, the go-to under retirement benefits, non-affiliated employees shall be eligible for, what I would suggest the right language should read, for the two retirement benefits identified in Sections five, two nine zero E and F below, and then put them in separate headings, provided they meet the specified criteria identified in Sections five dash two nine zero A through D below. And then I would renumber your new categories, which begin with a B, make that B and A, and go from A to D like you would normally do alphabetically. I think A just fell off accidentally, and then the numbering will go off. And then the next two paragraphs that identify the benefits, I would label as E and F, and one little language change there. Otherwise, it doesn't flow grammatically. It doesn't make sense, and we're missing an A, and the categorization doesn't fit. If you want, I could just hand you the markup.
Okay. Ralph and Bor, I would suggest, given that these are for first read, if there are issues that have to do with typos or numbering, that either that can be given to Gil as a question or comment prior to the meeting, or so that we don't use our time to go through. I think that we're going to be fine with, you know, type with things like that. So, I think that would be the best approach with that. If it's not substantive to just have it, if you catch it beforehand, if we can just get it to them and reference it, that's what we'll do.
Probably won't though. I'm just saying from a timing standpoint, you know, we all have jobs and stuff. And so, when I'm reading this at one in the morning, I'm not going to be typing it up. Just tell them to make sure.
But if there are things that have to do with...
As a board member, I'll raise them when I can. And I'll try to be mindful of people's time, but if I can't do it that way, I'm going to do it this way. But I'm going to make it raise.
And I'm not saying not to raise it, Ralph, and I believe this is an issue, but I will say that if it is an issue that has to do with typographical errors or numbering, that you can reference that in your comment, but to be responsive and respectful of all of our time, because we all are busy, that we use this time to reference it and, as you did, give it to Joylyn or to Gil. We will be reviewing our board agreements, and that is one that we've had, and it certainly seems to me to review again. So, thank you.
Are there any other policies? Item B, the Racial Equity Procedure Process Update. Dr. LeVar Emmes, Executive Director of Equity and Student Services, through success, will be presenting a racial equity policy timeline and procedure development. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Two, Racial Equity, and Board Policies seven colon one to twelve.
Good evening.
Good evening. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you.
This is Dr. Emmes' first board presentation.
Yes, first board presentation, so I'm pretty excited about that. I've been able to sit back and kind of watch how things unfold, so.
What'd you think?
It's still alive.
Me too. Is there something about being newer and going last?
Yeah.
That's cool.
Yeah. So, thank you for your time. In short, my purpose here tonight is to lay out the timeline for the development of procedures for the racial equity policy. We landed in this space today, able to do this, because going back to September eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, the board went ahead and approved the framework for the development of this policy. Throughout that year, through some collaboration of teachers and administrators and such, and content experts, we were able to then develop a racial equity policy that we brought into existence on April twenty-sixth of two thousand nineteen. At this point now, as a result of having this policy in place, we're looking to put together the timeline for those, the development of those procedures. So, then, when looking at the policy itself, it's comprised of twelve components. The first three of which are processes to ensure that accountability measures are put in place. So, as we're looking at the document for accountability and monitoring, equity analysis, the equitable practices, procedures, and programs, these components are, again, to ensure that we are operating with racial equity in mind, right, being intentional about our race. The following nine components are reflection of the functional components of our institution, a lot of pieces as to which we are already working at. But again, the policy is going to, they're our focus in terms of being intentional about race, ensuring that we're operating equitably in that regard. Now, as for the procedures up in the timeline, so as we look at this work, it's going to be broken down into two, into two levels. The first level will be the Racial Equity Procedure Development Team. This team will meet monthly from September through November. It's going to be a much larger group of administrators, teachers, community stakeholders, students, as appropriate, in order to then process our data, have an opportunity to deconstruct the policy itself, deconstruct the policy itself, and have a better understanding of it as to, you know, how we break down this policy and operationalize it within the context of our institution. At the second level, then, we get a bit more granular with the working groups. So, these groups will be a derivative of the much larger group, and these groups will meet on a weekly basis with myself. And that way, again, we can be a bit more granular with looking at that data, seeing how we are approaching our work on a day-to-day basis, and how to, again, stay focused on or isolate based within the work. As far as the timeline and how that works with those two groups and how that is operationalized, we have these four tenants that stays in line with what the strategic plan is looking for. So, that first tenant being the critical examination of our current practices with an equity lens. That will be August through December. So, again, those individual groups will be more granular groups that will be focused on the individual components of racial equity policy. Within those of the times, we'll be looking at data and so forth to make sure that we are operating with that racial equity lens within the twelve components. The second and third tenants, honest reflection of our own assumptions and approaches to equitable education. That's an ongoing process that we're always trying to work through here as we do this work. The same can be said for the third tenant of engaging with stakeholders. Those monthly meetings with that much larger group will definitely have more stakeholders involved in that as a reflective process, so they can then review where we are in the process of developing these procedures and getting any feedback from those groups. That final piece, Determination of Specific Actions Cast toward School Improvement, we'll look to start that in January through May in terms of being able to then identify which components of the policy will then be implemented and in what order. So, with that said, I will leave it open for any questions that you may have in regards to the implementate, or the policy development, procedure development, I'm sorry.
Anyone have a question?
No, I don't have a question. First, I want to compliment you on what you put together here. I think it's a nice, it's a really nice outline of a procedure.
Sure.
I would hope that in the, just if you don't know me, I do systems analysis on equity for jobs. So, this is like near to my heart, what you've done here.
Wonderful.
I would like to see somewhere here, focus on evidence-based practices that have been shown to alleviate gaps in performance and/or create better environments in school atmosphere. I do think we need to take an evidence-based approach. I hear, you know, it's interesting, the subtext of a lot of what you put together all sounded evidence-based. So, really just throwing that in there, I think would be helpful. And really, I just, I just want to say, I'm happy to help you in any part of this effort at all. I think you've really put together a very thoughtful piece here, and I look forward to working with you.
Likewise. Thank you. Any other questions?
Have I covered on that?
Yes.
In our conversations with Dr. Emmes, that's really why that first part, you see, we're looking at our current practice and then what do we really believe, and then getting into really doing some research and data analyzation of that.
And that's brilliant, you know, and it's really, and it's so consistent with what we see at the data at the national and the state level, is that's the right approach to the analysis. Because uniquely on race, and we really need to communicate this well to stakeholders, I think, it's the one item that has shown to have a statistically meaningful correlation to differences in performance, and it's not student-centric, it is system-centric. So, you look at the other items in education that have these relationships, income. Well, low-income children generally at home don't have education reinforced the same way as non-low-income kids, less access to computers, blah, 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 blah. So, that's, that's an issue where the school can create an intervention based on what they assume the kid doesn't have. So, it's a kid-centric issue that the system is used to fix in. Special needs, well, you identify the special needs, you create an IEP, go forward. English as a second language, once a kid is learning in English while learning English, we could identify, those are all kid-centric. On race, it's the system. The system has failed the children. It's not that children have any lack of capacity to learn. And so, doing this thorough systems analysis and finding those barriers you've created in your system, whether implicitly or explicitly, is the crucial first step to remedy the problem. And that's why I really like what you put together. I think it's very thoughtful, and that's, and Joylyn, to your emphasis on the using the data and the evidence-based practices. These problems are solvable, but you have to be very honest when you address them, and you really have to be inward-looking as a system.
Absolutely.
So, I did have one comment, and I made it in the text, and I realized that, I've kind of gotten the answer of no, which was fine. What I was trying to communicate was that in the case of, this is my perception, I'm by no means an expert, you guys are much more than that, but in the case of the transgender policy, in the case of some of the other policies that we've done, those things have, they have narrower scopes. And my concern here is that we're looking at this entirely systematic and the whole thing at once, and that I worry that we're able to ever get through it, because the problem is so big. And our, and my request was, and are there ways to break it down into other pieces that we can drive some accomplishment more quickly than trying to address it all at once as a system? And I've just, all I'm making a comment relative to my own experience in dealing with big change, is that if you don't break it down into pieces and drive wins, it gets very, very big and very, very difficult to maintain momentum. And so, that was my comment. And I don't know, I have no expertise in knowing how to break this into some pieces. I'm just going from my own experience that that is something I was trying to encourage us to consider.
Craig, that's very insightful, and yes, it's possible, and it certainly is the way these systems are dealt with over time. So, you look at pedagogy, you look at implicit bias, you look at, you know, staff attitude, faculty attitude. You can break it down, and then you can implement evidence-based practices that have been shown to resolve each one of these individual issues that overall then work to make the system perform better. So, you have to do that.
I would just, LeVar's been talking, and as I think that referencing the gender, our gender policy procedures, excuse me, and that process, I think will be an excellent roadmap in doing this work. And to Craig's point, I have to say that I'm hoping that, you know, even within this timeline, that as we're saying that we, that there will be some procedures that we can start implementing second semester, and I think that that goes towards having, you know, the things that have to do with, like our, there's one, which one is it?
Or maybe the racial incident protocol.
There's no reason in my mind that we can't have folks that are working on that.
Correct.
And how that, you know, so the prioritizing of aspects, but also pulling out, because the work that was done on the policy is the roadmap for the procedures. And I think that if we have some things that we can effectively communicate and start, and looking at January as a time to pilot certain things, so that at the end of the year, we can have some discussion and know how we're moving into next year. So, it's not everything starting at once or everything's fresh.
Sure. Sure. I think that speaks to Craig's point, you know, right? And I've improved it out of the now. We talked about that in terms of, there are certain things that we are doing as of right now that we could look at, and some of these things will be much easier to implement than others. So, identifying what those are, like the racial incident protocol, to put that in place is something that's realistic for us going into, into second semester as we do our recent board fore.
And just from a communication standpoint, it's helpful if that information is provided as in the communication to the board, because this also goes out to the community, and that's a way that we all stay kind of on the same page about what we're, what to expect.
Makes sense.
Thank you.
I just want to first welcome you, Dr. Emmes. I know you're not here at your first meeting. You've been here organizing some many folks who've been working here for a long time, so I appreciate your diligence.
Appreciate it.
Yes. And so, welcome on an official basis. And this all is outstanding. I guess another thing that I'm hopeful for is that you'll be able to connect as often as possible in as many settings across the school as possible to infuse those, whether it's assembly or students that are coming in or anyone, some of these principles, some of these, so that we can kind of, people can sample what you're talking about without being fully part of these working groups or these students that you might be with more in-depth. Because I think it's important for people to start to catch the bug if they haven't already caught it, whatever that may look like. And I realize, you know, you only have so many hours in a day. So, to the degree that that can be assimilated into all of this, I think would be wonderful.
Sure, sure. I understand the level of commitment the community and the district and this institution has for racial equity and what it's really going to take to move the needle. And I'm willing to be visible in a way of capacity in working with the working groups. That's just going to infuse just me and what I need to do in multiple levels and areas within the building. So, that's certainly a brand of mine to actionize my work in that way.
I just want to say thank you. This is great. You're off to a great start, and we're all really excited to see this unfold. So, no pressure. It would be awesome, but we're super excited.
Yeah. Yeah. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
All right.
Stay tuned.
Take care.
Okay. The next item, I'm going to turn this over to Dr. Moore, is regarding the town hall topics.
What'd you think?
We have our first one, September fourth.
Yes.
Yes. We have, you saw my reaction earlier today when I said more town hall, because we're...
It seems so, please.
Oh, yeah. So, we've got three already on the calendar. The first one is September fourth. There's one in February, there's one in May. We're also planning an opportunity for, for additional conversations based upon the topic you're going to hear about next week. And then we're planning an opportunity for Dr. Emmes to also go out of the gates of the community. So, we realized that the board goals are really about the community having a dialogue with the board, and we recognize that. Two suggested topics we have, however, would probably engage the community more with administration, and we wanted to talk about how we can do that. One of the things that's been on the list for quite a while is to do a State of the District presentation publicly. We do updates here on strategic plan and on the five essentials and other things, but, you know, we don't have a lot of presence here. We're really wanting to, but we're going to change the narrative about our district to get out there more. So, the suggestion for September was possibly a State of the District address, but we still need to figure out how that will include the board in that dialogue. Then the suggestion for February was an update on the racial equity work, and that's in addition to having just a conversation, during the conversation with Dr. Emmes. But one is the board's insight on some topics that are, as we said, we would bring topics of interest to the community, those major things we're working on, that will allow an opportunity for the community to have some exchange with members of the board. And so, that's why this item is here. That's a very short turnaround for September fourth.
Can I get a suggestion? So, I, you'll be hearing this for the next four years, although I hope not quite that long, but I really would love us to sign a data sharing and kind of roll that up to the community, because that is going to be, you know, if we do it, which I hope we do, that will be a significant change, and I think it would be good to sort of rewire that and have those conversations early. I'm not sure where the other two districts are on this.
So, we've done a lot of work. Greg and Christine and Crystal, who's gone, a couple more people, have really been working on data share. There's been conversations with legal counsel. Their conversation has also started, I believe, with our theater districts about the data share. What we've been able to find is similar to what the presentation was last year. As in high school, we are entitled to all this data, but the sticky wicket is what the theater schools need from us in preparation for their students to be prepared when they get here. So, that's, we are working on that, and there's some ongoing conversation. We actually made a quote of the strategic plan for last year so that we could begin to move that forward. And the goal is, once we've got everything solidified, to come forward with a presentation to the board. I just can't say that we'll be ready for September fourth.
And to that point, and as it related to the tri-equity board, one of the things when I talked about was to have that as a convening of all of the districts so that we're, because there are a lot of families in our community that assume that we share data and information. And so, we had talked about perhaps, and, you know, that could be our tri-equity board meeting, to talk about the information and the, and from a curriculum standpoint as well, the requests from the theater districts, how do we prepare our students, and for us, what information we need for them to be successful. So, I think if we can keep talking about that, like we said this spring.
I can just make one suggestion on that. I suggest we build that as a town hall as much as a tri-board meeting, just to make sure that the public...
Well, but like we did the town, the tri-board town hall.
It was a town hall?
Mm-hmm. It was at River Forest, it was at River Forest.
Oh, right.
But greatly attended by your workers.
Yes. Yes.
So, it was a really, it was a really good event.
Yeah. And I, that's how, I mean, I think that all the districts are talking, and it's a great reminder for our community, too, that these are all our kids, not dependent on, you know, the schools, even though we have unit districts.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Yeah. And with the State of the District, you were saying that for...
The State of the District is more just saying where we are with strategic plan, where we are with student performance data, feedback from the five essentials, the State Report Corps, just a real view of the school district as a whole and how we're doing and progressing in terms of school development.
And Joylyn, could you have that ready by September fourth? Because that might be a good kickoff to the year, but it sounds like a lot of work.
Yes.
And when we...
We know that that's when it's going to happen.
Yeah. And when we talk about this, I think the, the work for the board, or the responsibility of the board, is to have access to that information, because we've talked about these town halls as being a dialogue with the board and those opportunities. So, I think we have to convey what this is clearly, so folks don't come and think that, you know, we're just all going to line up and, you know, ask questions of everything, whatever we wanted to know, but that we're prepared to answer questions that are directed at us as board members. What you were saying, the other, the only other thing in terms of potential topics that I was thinking about, and it was when Joey Kowski was the, our student council liaison, and he had, his student council used to have a thing that they did with students called Bring It to the Board, and where they had topics that they wanted to have, you know, questions they had, and he would bring it to the board. So, if we could have some way of just kind of reaching out to our community to what are the things that you... to what are the things that you, you know, want to hear about, and it's a broad enough net, so it's not just the usual suspects, but that we get an array of topics. He may be, you know, completely unaware of what our community wants to hear about.
And Jack, that's another really good suggestion. We did that at D ninety on a Saturday, Town Hall Forum, to make it more convenient for parents and stuff to attend. You know, D ninety didn't have big turnouts at our, at our board meetings, generally speaking, but we had about eight, five people show up for that.
Yeah.
And they raised a lot of questions, some of which, you know, we anticipated, but a few of which we sure did not. So, it was a good opportunity to have a dialogue, and to even say, we'll get back to you on that one. We don't have a good answer right now, but at least it brought some stuff to the fore.
Yeah, Joe Kowski.
But I liked it, I liked it.
Yeah, of course. It was great. Okay, I would assume that that was future due items as well, or does anyone have any others? Okay, good. I move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.